I'd like to call this meeting to order and then call Agenda Item Number Two, Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Garza.
Please, by his house, please. Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you guide us through our thoughts and our actions, help us to accomplish our goals, and always meet what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. We also ask that you bless our children, our teachers, and our staff as they begin a new school year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Presentation of Parks and Recreation TAF Athletes, Mr. Benson or his designee, Mr. Benson's here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. First off, I'd like to say thank you all for the support. You know, our summer programs would not happen if it weren't for the support of all you guys. You know, it keeps our kids occupied, it keeps them prepared, it keeps them ready, it keeps them fit. We have a diabetes problem, and, you know, all these guys are really good. I mean, they're in shape, they're tuned in, they're focused, and these are our next year's leaders. They're gonna be next year's voters. But anyway, on our summer program, this is the whole entire summer program, we had 828 students that were registered for our summer program. Out of that, we had 453 students register with our Texas Amateur Athletic Federation, which is otherwise known as TAF. Our Gus and Goldie Program, we had 375 students per summit per term. We had three terms, each one had 375 students in there. Now, what we're here today for is to recognize our student that made it to the Games of Texas. Last two years, they were held in McAllen, and now the next two years will be held in College Station, which houses the University of Texas. Excuse me, I'm wearing burnt orange today, please don't take offense, Dr. Fany. But anyway, of the three, of the 453 students that were registered to our program, we took 140 people up there. There was 123 total athletes that were, that competed up there. Out of that, there was 13 coaches and four of our park staff. But I've got George Chapa here with us, and he's my parks, he's our recreation supervisor, but he's can get down to nitty-gritty on our stats for y'all.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having us. Okay, we went up there with 140 people, 123 athletes. Tennis is strong with the young kids. We have about 80 percent of the kids are under 12 years old, and 14 athletes from tennis went up. They came back with 11 medals, two gold, two silver, and a bunch of bronze. They got several consolation, but that's fourth place, so, but they did well. Swimming is a big numbers. We had 243 people register for, we got the white, red, blue, and elite teams. We had 243 athletes went up there to represent. Seventy-nine people qualified to go up to represent, and they came back with four silver, I mean, four gold, four silver, and four bronze. They did well. Track is always a little tougher. We had 117 people register, sign up for it. We had two people bring back golds, one to 800, one to high jump, and a four-by-four relay team placed second. That's a 400, relay of four, with 400 meters. Again, thank you all very much for your, for your help and your supporting us. Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you very much yourself for your expertise and your professionalism and dealing with our youth, you know. Our youth development is one of our major, major goals that we want to incorporate into the City of Mission, so...
We got some athletes here. It's mostly swimming. Athletes and coaches.
Feel free to recognize them.
Okay, we got the swim coach, Arnold Perez. And he'll introduce the staff. My tennis and track people have already started, their coaches in high school, so they've started their programs.
Okay.
Arnold, go ahead.
...
Can you come up to the podium and be able to state their name for that? Because we are, we are in Facebook Live, so...
Sorry, that's a...
And what school do you attend also?
Yeah, give me your name, real quick, and then just come by the thing. Also too, we broke the state record on the 200 men relay, which I thought was a real big deal, that record to send to talk to, and we broke it this year, so I'm very proud of that. Just wanted to go and get that out.
Trevor Heath.
And the school.
Alvaro Garza.
Shoreland High School.
I'm Kalina Martinez, I go to Mission High School.
I'm Malina Martinez, and I go to Shoreland High School.
I'm Madeline, and I go to Wilson Elementary, fifth grade.
Andrew Atkins, and I go to Pioneer High School.
I'm Aaron Sanchez, and I go to Veterans Memorial.
I'm Kimberly Bazan, and I go to Michael Ufossen.
I'm Laudara, and I go to Mission High School.
My name is Robert Menez, and I'm at Mission High School.
I'm Rosamond Ramirez, I go to IDA.
I'm Julio DeGra, and I go to Nocturne High.
I'm Sebastian Dogger, I go to Shoreland.
I'm Claire Kim, and I go to Schumacher Elementary.
I'm John Kirin, I go to Ruben and Hossa.
I'm Angela Perez, and I go to Mission Junior High.
I have Andrea Garcia, and I go to Ruben and Hossa.
I'm Catherine Kirin, I go to Ruben and Hossa.
John Crater, and I go to Johnny Cherry Elementary.
I don't need a mic, I'm fine. My coach is around this, I was part of the summer track team, and fortunately we didn't have our whole team come, but we had some of the kids that went to represent. First is up, Rigo Martinez, he was our junior boy. He was our only state champion we had in the track team. He was less than about four milliseconds away from breaking the state record. Next girl, Janelle, she competed in the long jump, she triple jumped and high jump. She placed fourth and fifth, she did really good. She competed against some of the best girls there, about this tall. Compared to her, she did really good. And last but not least, we got one of our other kids, he's from Shoreland, his name's Carlos, he competed one of the events in our relays, which our boys got sixth place overall, out of, I think it was 18 teams. So they did really good out there, too. Oh yeah, and also, yes, she's not here. One of our high jumpers, she placed, I can't remember what place she got. I didn't get, she got first? Yeah, okay, I didn't get to go watch her jump, so I was with these other guys, but she got first place. And also, our senior boys, our four-by-one relay, they went into the finals, they got sixth place overall. And then also our, they also ran against the four-by-four, but the other boys that we had, they, we got second and sixth, so we did have a good outstanding kids out there, representing the City of Mission.
James Sanchez, I'm a swim coach, and I did the archery competition.
Can all the parents of these children stand up here so you can be recognized? Good job.
Good job. Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Nice seeing you again. Surfer? Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Parents, I would like to thank you for trusting your kids under our supervision, and we look forward to working with you all again next year. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Nice seeing you again. Surfer? Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Parents, I would like to thank you for trusting your kids under our supervision, and we look forward to working with you all again next year. Thank you.
Item four of the regular meeting introduction to the newly promoted Deputy Chief, Chief Sanchez.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce our newly promoted Deputy Chief of the Mission Fire Department. He has met all the civil service requirements for his respective position. This person has been within the department for over 17 years since 2001. As starting as a firefighter, he has gone up the ranks of the Mission Fire Department. On January 2016, he was promoted to engineer. On December 2007, he was promoted to lieutenant and assigned to the Fire Prevention Division and assigned as fire inspector. On December 2010, he was promoted to captain and assigned as assistant fire marshal. On July 30th, 2018, he was promoted to deputy chief. I would like to introduce Deputy Chief Francisco Palacios. Now, this becomes a little more difficult for me, the announcement of the position I have assigned this individual. As you well know, I have served as fire marshal since 2000. I'm happy that you gave me a small opportunity for the development of this city. Obviously, I will be continuing as fire chief, but Deputy Chief Francisco Palacios has been assigned as fire marshal for the Mission Fire Prevention Division of the Mission Fire Department.
Marshal Palacios.
Mayor, thank you. I'd just like to thank everyone in the City of Mission for giving me the opportunity to be a fire marshal, and I hope to continue the same quality of service that has been done in the past.
Get your way to the council.
Congratulations, Marshal. Congratulations.
All of you are marshals.
Good job. Thank you.
Again, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
The City of Mission is in your hands. Regular meeting agenda item number five, presentation of American Cancer Society, April Chapa.
Good evening. I have a little PowerPoint, so...
We need to lower the intensity.
Is that gonna be on our screen? No. Of course, you're not in the way. You're not in the way. Good evening, Mayor, Councilwomen and Councilmen, and citizens of the lovely City of Mission. My name's April Chapa, and I am the Senior Community Development Manager for the American Cancer Society. And I'm here today to talk about an event that we will be having in our lovely city at our new Mission Event Center on October 13th. Today, I brought a breast cancer survivor with me. Her name is Patricia, and if you want to introduce yourself, she is also my chair for this event.
Hi, I'm Patricia Almendares, and I am a two-time breast cancer survivor.
So on October 13th, we will be hosting a Making Strides Against Breast Cancer of the Rio Grande Valley in the City of Mission. The closest event is in Corpus of this size and nature. So what really is Making Strides Against Breast Cancer? It's a big breast cancer pink walk. That's what it is. It's about a three-to-five mile walk, and what it is, is a powerful event... Okay, I think we're cut up now. To this, there, the next one? No. So it's a powerful event to raise awareness and funds to end breast cancer. It's the largest network of breast cancer event in the nation. It's a non-competitive three-to-five mile event, we're not stuck on a 5K, but it's a distance, and I am currently working with the city, with the police, to confirm and secure that route. We have no registration fee, but we encourage sponsorships and team fundraising. Survivors are honored, and we also remember those that we've lost. But of course, we also have tons of fun, we'll have entertainment, we will have a huge big pink chair sponsored by Lax where you can take pictures, plenty of photo opportunities, and of course, we're gonna have a balloon release, and we're gonna have a lot of fun for the survivors, and then of course, anybody that wants to come out and help us celebrate that. Reasons to be united in this event, just a real tidbit of information here, in 2018, more than 266 women are expected to be newly diagnosed with breast cancer. And, you know, while breast cancer death rate has decreased by 38 percent over the past two decades, we still have a lot of work to do. And while these statistics may be staggering, there is still hope, and that's why we have this event, and we have this Making Strides event, so we can't do this without our community. And we also, how do we invest our dollars raised? A lot of people want to know where our money is going. Our education and early detection, research, and comprehensive support. This is how we fund these opportunities for us, and our early detection and prevention. We provide education for healthcare professions, we of course have funding grants to educate and enable risk factors, and of course, we know that there are steps to be, to help save, and that's what we really want to do, is hone in on our early detection and prevention. Groundbreaking research, the American Cancer Society is currently funding more than $62.6 million breast cancer research grants as of March of 2018, but we're also funding 263 grants relating to all cancers, but this event specifically is for breast cancer. Our comprehensive support is kind of what we are, give for our community. We have, of course, our breast cancer research, we have a 24/7 cancer hotline that's free to anybody with many variety of languages, the English, Spanish, and we have our Road to Recovery, where we give free rides to patients for treatments. Some people don't realize that or know that, but if someone's from Rio Grande City, Mission, anywhere in the Rio Grande Valley, these funds are used for rides to treatments for chemotherapy and radiation. Patient navigators, a lot of people need help to find out what their insurance, medicines, that 1-800 number, all of this is free. Our Hope Lodge, we just broke ground in Houston, we're gonna have a free place for people to stay, and it'll be opening in 2020, and all those funds are from the funds that we raise for our other events, like Really for Life. Breast cancer, locally though, in our local office, breast cancer patients can go get a free wig, can get free head scarves and turbans at our McAllen office. Our Making Strides of Rio Grande Valley event, I would like to invite everybody, the City of Mission, the whole Rio Grande Valley, specifically the Councilmen and Women and the Mayor, to this event. We also will be having a kickoff breakfast on August 23rd at the Mission Event Center, so I welcome you to please come to that at seven in the morning. A little bit early, but you can have lunch, breakfast, sorry, before work. And I'd also like to recognize, we have what we call Portraits of Hope, and so this year we're honoring three cancer survivors. We have Sasha Amara is the first picture, who is currently fighting cancer. We have Naomi Sanchez in the middle, she's an eight-year breast cancer survivor. And then we have Patricia, that's a 19, and also a three-year survivor. And I kind of want Patricia maybe to say a little, a little bit about herself, and these are amazing women that have inspiring stories, and at the event, we will of course honor all breast cancer survivors, but we've chosen these three to highlight.
Thank you for having us here. As I mentioned, I am a two-time breast cancer survivor, and the reason that I'm here is because people before me have made strides against breast, against breast cancer, tongue twister. My family and I, when I was first diagnosed, used the 1-800 number and the online services to retrieve more information and to get some emotional, more support from there. I was, when I was first diagnosed, I was reached from a co-cancer survivor, and she came to me just to bring me hope, and she was a member of the Reach to Recovery program. I did attend also the Look Good for Better program, in which I was gifted with a wig and some head covers, such as scarves and a turban. And this Look Good for Better program is also designed to help us as patients who are undergoing chemotherapy, to learn a little bit more about skincare and how to promote the self-awareness and the moral of it is to, the more you look good, the better you'll feel. And in short, I am a 19-year cancer survivor because so many people have made strides before me, and I ask for your support to continue to make strides, and we hope you all will join us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, April.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you.
You can see it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Six years now? Ms. Chapa, do you mind taking a picture with the council yourself in this?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. And don't forget to wear your pink.
I got a pink shirt.
You know what, I have to fly.
Hey, where's the camera, please? Take it.
Thank you.
Let me call regular agenda item number six, report from Hands and Hearts. Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir, we do have Ms. Helen Inskeep. She's been a great asset to the city since they arrived, so I know they have a quick report to present to the city, Mayor.
Hello, I am here to make the report. I have been here since the initial rapid response in Hidalgo County. Recently, we were able to get a partnership with AmeriCorps, so we've brought in a total of 30 people that are now working on homes here in Hidalgo County. That has brought our total number of homes that are ready for rebuild up to 36. That means that they have had all contaminated materials removed and had a chemical sprayed in their home to get rid of that mold, so they can rebuild their homes. We do have a departure date for all Hands and Hearts, which will be August 31st, and I have some copies of our flyers, if anybody, any of the council members or anyone present would like a copy of that with our homeowner intake number on it, if anyone would like assistance. That's all for me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Regular meeting agenda item number seven, report from the National Butterfly Center, Dr. Glassberg.
Mayor, City Council, hi. Is this working? Yeah. My name is Dr. Jeff Glassberg, I'm president of the North American Butterfly Association. We are a national nonprofit that owns and operates the National Butterfly Center here in Mission, Texas. And first thing I want to say is, some of you may know, I know that some of you know because some of you were there, that yesterday we had an event at the Butterfly Center called Take Back the River, and today's monitor had on the front page at the top had a picture of the, of the event, and I want to use that as an occasion to thank all of you, because the city made it happen, and the city, we really are appreciative of the city's support of this event, both helping to organizing and so many of the personnel from the city, the people from the fire department and the police department were there, and everybody had a great time. As you can see, one of the things people did was fish, even though we're the National Butterfly Center, and many of the people that came yesterday, there were more than 400 that came, and many of them had never been to the Butterfly Center today, and today we had many calls of people wanting to know, can they come fish there some more? And if you want to fish there, you can become a member of the National Butterfly Center for just $35 a year, and you can fish there. We hope to convert all of the fishermen into butterfly people, but I've been told that the butterflies don't taste as good as the fish do. However, however, if taking up butterflying is kind of like a treasure hunt, and so it's kind of like a sport where you track them down, and it's a fun activity. The other thing I want to tell you about is a couple of dates that we've got coming up. The Haunted Trails, which some of you may know, that had been in West Laco in the valley, is going to be at the Butterfly Center this year. There's gonna be two spooky nights, I am told, Friday, October 26th, and Saturday, October 27th, so if you want to get scared, come over to the Butterfly Center. Secondly, we have the 23rd Annual Texas Butterfly Festival, which is, we are grateful, has been supported and continues to be supported by the, by the City of Mission, and we hope you will continue to do that. We're looking for even greater support next year, the level of support's been the same for six years, and the costs to us have gone up almost double, very, really significantly. So we hope you'll come. It's going to be November 3rd through 6th with a community day where everybody comes free on Saturday, November 3rd, and one of those community days where I was, was actually one of the most heartwarming days of my life to see. There were about 2,500 people from Mission there that day, and all the kids were around with their cameras photographing butterflies, and I've never felt so good in my life. So I hope you can, hope you can make that. And lastly, I want to just say that we've always tried, you know, our main goal really is butterflies and butterfly conservation and the habitats for butterflies, but more and more, we are invested in the City of Mission, we are interested in helping the City of Mission to do better, to be a legitimate tourist attraction, to help, to help grow the economy of Mission so that it's to the benefit of everybody. And over the years, the North American Butterfly Association has put something like $7 to $8 million into this facility. We've had great support from the City of Mission, but less than 10 percent of that number, so almost all of the amount that's come in here has come in from outside the valley, from all over the country. So that's, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that, I don't know if I've forgotten anything important probably, but I look forward to working with you all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Doc. Regular meeting agenda eight, from the report from the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Rossell's not here, so the desert this year.
Good evening, council and members of this great city. My name's Jennifer Nava. I'm the Director of Events and Marketing for the Greater Mission Chamber, and would like to give you a report on recent events and upcoming events. Our recent events, we held a ribbon cutting on July 25th with the DHR Health Transplant Institute at DHR. It was a collaborative event between Mission, McCowen, and other chambers of commerce. On July 26th, we held a grand opening and ribbon cutting for Azure Financial Group. On August the 2nd, we participated with the Mission CISD's Back to School Bash. If you're not aware, the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce, each March holds a Tom Landry Golf Classic, where we were able to raise funds to provide the 2,000 backpacks that were given out that evening to the students throughout Mission CISD Elementary through high school students. So we were there that evening as well, passing out backpacks. We had a great collaboration this year as well with HEB, who partnered with us on those efforts as well. For upcoming events, on Thursday, August the 16th, we will be having a grand opening for E-Mattress. That will be from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. at 708 North Conley, Suite 3. That is right next to the HEB, across from Placita Park. And right next to that, on the following Monday, August the 20th, at the same area, we will have a ribbon cutting for LOB Learning Academy. That is a daycare center, and it's open seven days a week. It's going to be Monday, August 20th, from 12:30 to 1:30 p.m. at 106 East 8th Street, Mission, Texas. We also have a collaborative mixer that will be held at the Mission Event Center on August 22nd. That is with RG Vision Magazine and ourselves. It will be benefiting Teach for America. That is a nonprofit that serves value-wide towards education. And we'll be honoring Dr. Shirley Reed from South Texas College. Last year, the event had over 250 attendees, so we're looking forward to this great fundraiser on their behalf. We hope you can join us. Again, it's Wednesday, August 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Mission Event Center. And just announced today, our next Buenos Aires luncheon. If you did not go to our last one, we were very fortunate to bring Vince Young, our former NFL quarterback. And it was a great event, a regional event, brought in a lot of people throughout the area. So we said, well, we brought a longhorn, now we're going to bring in Aggies. So we're going to be featuring Mr. Dayton Nguyen. He's a former Dallas Cowboy and Texas A&amp;M Aggie, and he is also a Chick-fil-A franchise owner. That will be Friday, September 14th, from 11:30 to 1:00 at the Mission Event Center. We do have tickets and sponsorships available, including special meeting great tickets as well. And then lastly, but not least, our 2018 Annual Banquet and our Chamber Choice Awards. That will be, theme is Fiesta Miami. It's a casual and fun event on Friday, October 5th, at the Mission Event Center. This year, we moved it from a Thursday to a Friday, so we hope that you all can come, take the evening off, and enjoy with us from 6:00 p.m. to midnight, live music, awards, great food, and a great time celebrating the upcoming year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regular meeting agenda item number nine, the departmental reports. I will ask the council to, at this time, to, any questions on any other departmental reports that were in your packet?
None, ma'am. Other than July was a really good year, month, rather, for the event center. Hopefully, that continues. But other than that...
No, no, no. I move to approve. Second.
Motion to approve, and second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Departmental reports have been approved. Regular item number 10, citizens' participation. This is open to anybody in the audience that would like to come and address the council. Please, if you do, come before us and identify yourself, your name and address, and you have a limit of three minutes.
My name is Coach Walker. I retired from Cave White Junior High after twenty-five great years of teaching and coaching. And the Lord, four years ago, I retired. The Lord hired me and said, you wasted eighty-two years, now it's time to go to work for me. Now, I would like to pray for the city council, if I may. Dear Lord Jesus, at this meeting and the city council, we give you thanks for all that has been and has been accomplished through the work this council. I especially give you thanks for the work of our mayor, Okonya, and the city council members, for our enthusiasm, commitment, and civic duty to our beloved city of Mission and its residents.
Residents.
Jesus, I pray you bless, blessing upon every council member who holds your office or has special responsibility within it for leadership and for new initiatives that are being brought within it. We pray for your guidance and blessing on all those who endeavor for the benefit of our city of Mission. God has a great plan for your life, an opportunity. Important question, if you would die this very second, do you know for sure that you would go to heaven? For the ways you've seen is death, but who shall ever shall upon called the name of Jesus shall be saved. I pray that you would be so mild to re-dedicate your heart or receive the gift that God has for you today. Say after me with your heart and lips out loud, say, "Dear Lord Jesus..."
Dear Lord Jesus.
"...come into my heart."
Come into my heart.
"Be my Lord and Savior."
Be my Lord and Savior.
"Forgive me for all my sins."
Forgive me for all my sins.
"Set me free."
Set me free.
"Jesus, thank you that you died for me."
Thank you.
"I believe that Jesus has risen from the dead."
Believe that Jesus has risen from the dead.
"And that Jesus is coming back for me."
And that Jesus is coming back for me.
"Fill me with the Holy Spirit."
Fill me with the Holy Spirit.
"Give me a passion for the lost."
Give me a passion for the lost.
"Give me hunger for things of God."
Give me hunger for things of God.
"And the holy boldness to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ."
Preach the gospel of Jesus Christ.
That's a long one. "I am saved."
I'm saved.
"I'm born again."
I'm born again.
"I am forgiven."
I'm forgiven.
"I am on my way to heaven."
I'm on my way to heaven.
"Because I have Jesus in my heart."
Because I have Jesus in my heart.
Everyone say their first name. My name is Lou. Your first name?
My name is Armando.
I want you to know that all your sins are forgiven. Always remember that God loves you and has a great plan for your life. Remember, do not run from God, but run to Him. We worship and smugger to you, Lord Jesus. All the things we do today is for your glory. Amen.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else, any citizens that would like to participate in the three minutes that is on the items that are not on the agenda? All you have to do is state your name and your address and the issues or items that you want to discuss. Okay. Thank you. I call for 1.0 Public Hearings, 1.1A Public and Zoning Recommendation, Letter A, Adoption of an Ordinance, and Mr. Osorio.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance amending Article 4, Section 1.16.4A, providing the Board of Adjustments, Quorum Procedures, and Appeals, and the powers of the Board. And if the council is inclined to approve this ordinance amendment, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. This ordinance would increase the radius from 200 feet to 500 feet with regards to notices that are sent out for zoning board of adjustment items. And there was no public input, there was no opposition. The Board unanimously recommended approval of this amendment to the current ordinance. Staff is also recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
This being a public hearing, I open it for a public input. Anybody in favor or against this public hearing, item number A? Anybody want to speak in behalf of this item in a public hearing, for or against? Anybody wants to speak in for or against of this item? Ordinance number?
Forty-six sixty-three.
This is, I close the public hearing and open it for discussion by the council.
I move for approval, this presented.
Second.
We have a motion in second, and this is open for further discussion. No discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearing, item number 1.1B, Adoption of an Ordinance. Mr. Osorio.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance amending Article 5, Section 1.20, 1.21, 1.23, and 1.24. Amendments, procedures, filing fee, and appeals from decisions of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if the council is inclined to approve this ordinance amendment, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. Mayor and Council, this ordinance would increase the radius with regards to notices that are sent on rezonings from 200 feet to 500 feet. It will also include something new that the city is going to be trying to do, which is to place a four-by-four sign in front of the property that's going to be rezoned. This is something that the city has never done, but it's something that should help out, because it would alert not only the people that get notices, but those that live within the area or travel through the area. There was no public input. At the P&amp;Z meeting, the Board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
I open the public hearing for the ordinance 4663 to B. Anybody from the public would like to state anything in favor or against? This is a public hearing to provide input for ordinance possible 4663. In favor or against? Any input from the audience on ordinance 4663, for or against? This is a public hearing. I am closing the public hearing and open it for discussion within the city council. City council, any discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and second, and this is open for further discussion in case anybody else wants to, from the council.
I just want to make a comment, and I'm glad that we're moving forward on the signs that are actually going to be posted on the properties. I think that's a very good idea.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Open the public hearing for adoption of 4664, possible adoption of 46, ordinance 4664. Mr. Osorio.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance amending Article 8, Use District and Conditional Uses. And if the council is inclined to approve this ordinance amendment, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. This ordinance would allow banks and credit unions to have a drive-through service window and drive-through service lanes without having to come in and apply for a conditional use permit. There was no public opposition or input. At the P&amp;Z meeting, the Board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
This is a public hearing. It's open for for or against? Anybody from the audience? This is a public hearing for a possible passing of 46, ordinance 4664. For or against from the audience? Any feedback from the audience on the public hearing for the ordinance 4664, possibility of passing? And this is, I close the public hearing and open it for further discussion by the council. Any council members?
There's no discussion. I'm move to approve.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
We had a similar CUP request by Raising Canes back a couple of years ago, I guess now.
Yes.
And it was, you know, they wouldn't fall, or a business like that would not fall under this ordinance?
Was that approved already? The ordinance, any national brand that came in that invested over half a million dollars that...
Those still have to go through the process. Now, when Raising Canes did come in, we did give them a life of use.
You're right.
Yes, but anybody else that wants to come in that's a national company, you know, that...
They would still have to go through the process. This only pertains to credit unions and banks.
So you will bring in that?
I think we need to revisit that, you know? I think...
I would like to see this back again, including...
So you want to expand on it?
Franchises, yes.
Okay.
So can we table the item?
I don't know. Table the item, you still have to go back to the planning and zoning, am I correct? Is it possible to...
It's probably best if we take no action, and then we'll just go back to the P&amp;Z with the correct amendment.
I think we accept the public hearing, but to take no action as a council, but let the public hearing stand as having been presented to the public. And we can revisit whether or not we want to add franchise.
Or approve it and then have another revisit of the, with the other item separate.
Yeah. But I would want to send it back to planning and zoning, aside my...
Because I think...
I'd rather have it just on one ordinance. I think it'd be easier to keep track of that way.
Well, it would still, it still would wind up on the same ordinance, but to send it back, you talk about redoing it from scratch. Is that the will of the council, or...
I just want the national franchises to be included.
Right. I don't want to waste this hearing, so just send back the national franchises and accept this.
And to do that, we have to, at this time, withdraw the motion that we have?
I think it would be a whole different ordinance if we do it two separate items.
If it's two separate items, it'd be two different ordinances, Mayor. So if, I guess, if the council wishes, you can not table it, but rather take no action, and then it would go back to P&amp;Z. But at that point, P&amp;Z could consider at the public hearing, the national franchise, and then it would come back to the city council.
And by, that's what I'm saying. So we already have a motion on the floor and a second. We would have to withdraw the motion on the floor.
That's correct, Mayor.
And a second. First, withdraw the second. Whoever seconded, withdraw your second, and then...
We have a second.
Will you get a second? Then it dies because of like a second. But does that mean that we have no motion, right?
At this point, if...
No motion, no action.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear, that we're going to, as a result of the action that we're taking, we're sending it back to planning and zoning for reconsideration and adding the component of the national brands that, if they come in and... I would think that the best rule of thumb, maybe if they're going to invest more than half a million dollars in Mission, then we can give them a lifetime, a lifetime drive-through if...
Not require them to have a conditional use permit.
Not require them, you know, if they, now... Okay? I mean, that's just my take. I don't know about how everybody else feels.
I agree.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
In that case, we are moving to item 1.1D, Adoption of the Possible Ordinance 4664.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance amending Article 10, Section 1.50 and 1.56 with regards to conditional use permits. And if the council is inclined to approve this ordinance amendment, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. This ordinance increases the notification radius... This ordinance increases the notification radius from 200 feet to 500 feet with regards to conditional use permits. Earlier, you approved one for zoning board items, rezonings. This one would amend the ordinance with regards to conditional use permits. There was no input at the P&amp;Z meeting. The Board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our City Manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the possible ordinance forty-six sixty-four? Please come before us in the podium and.
I'm going to take it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Again, this is a public hearing. For or against ordinance, possible ordinance sixty-four sixty, forty-six sixty-four? Any input, public hearing, possible ordinance forty-six sixty-four? I'll close the public hearing and I'll open it for any discussion by any of the Council If no discussion, do I hear a motion?
I'm move to approve.
We have a motion, and do I hear a second?
Second.
And we have a second, and this I open for further discussion, and if you want to further discuss it. And if no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Opening 1.1E, ordinance, possible ordinance forty-six sixty-five. This is a public hearing. Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance amending the Sign Code Ordinance Section eighty-six dash one fifty-five with regards to signage along the expressway corridor and secondary arterial corridors. And if the Council is inclined to approve this ordinance amendment, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. This particular ordinance would amend the allowable square footage for signs along the expressway corridor and secondary arterials from eight, eight hundred square feet to a thousand square feet. Now, one of the things that the P&amp;Z did recommend was to just keep this along the expressway corridors. They recommended that we approve the change, but only to properties along the expressway corridors and properties that are not abiding a residence. There was no opposition, there was no public input. The Board unanimously recommended approval with those conditions. Staff is recommending approval of the amendment along the expressway corridor only and not abiding a residence. When a residence abuts the, when a, when a residence does abut the commercial property along the expressway corridor, we are going to be asking that they revert back to the secondary arterial requirements. Our City Manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1E is now before you.
We have a public hearing. All those in favor or against possible ordinance forty-six sixty-five? Anybody for or against? This is a public hearing. Again, this is a public hearing for possible ordinance forty-six sixty-five. There being no feedback, I close the public hearing and I open it for further discussion from the Council. Any, any Council member has information or questions on that?
I do, Mayor, just a little bit. I'm having trouble, I guess, sensing what a thousand feet's going to look like compared to eight hundred and whether or not it's going to be any, I don't know, if it's going to look obnoxious or odd or whatever, so. I'm actually in favor of having, I know it's going to be one of the, the car companies that wants to build this, right?
Yes.
I'm actually in favor of allowing that car company a variance to build it, and then we'll see how it looks, and if it looks like it might be, I don't know, too much?
Yeah.
We, we, I think we already allowed Burt Ogden the.
Ogden did get a variance already.
Already, and we asked them to come back because we wanted to make sure that, that we allow everybody down the corridor from Inspiration to Taylor.
Yeah.
To be able to get those kind of signs that, that are, are bigger to attract people because once the, once the loop, the discussing was, once the loop is open from Pinatas around to Roma, that the people are going to be going up and down the expressway, and we wanted to make sure that they, they pull over instead of passing from, from Inspiration.
And that's fine, that's fine, but I, has Burt Ogden put up their sign yet?
No, they did put up their sign, similar to the one that they're going to be putting up here in Mercedes, so if you drive to the outlets on your way back, there's a Ford dealership there.
Yeah.
That has a.
Because we've already given them a variance to put that sign.
How does it look?
It's huge.
It is pretty huge.
I just think I would like to see that, that sign to see if in fact it's going to, I don't know, take away the aesthetics of some of the, whatever.
Go ahead, Ms. Russell.
When was the, the last time that we amended the, we increased the sign allowances? Hasn't been that long.
I'm not sure when the last change occurred.
Couple of years.
It was probably.
No more than two years, ma'am.
No more than two years, and, and, and so I, I think I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with, with Gus Martinis. I would rather leave it as is and, and see them on a case-by-case basis, you know, when we're, when they are going to go bigger than, than, than this.
Yeah, you can give them constant variance every time, but, you know, case by case.
Two thousand sixteen, we amended the sign code, but it was with regards to billboards. This section stayed the same. It was only with billboards.
I just want to see the thing first, yeah.
Yeah.
What they're doing is they're advertising, like, their commercials on the giant screen.
Yeah.
I passed by the one in Mercedes and.
Yeah.
It looks like a giant Jumbotron just showing advertisements for the dealership.
I think if, if, if someone wants to come in and wants to do whatever, we can offer them a variance at any time, but to set in the stone at a thousand, I'd rather see the Burt Ogden one first, just to see how that looks, but that's just me.
Any comments?
There hasn't been, just them coming forward, it's not like a need for the bigger sign, right? It's just that we won't hear it again?
Yeah.
I'm okay with hearing them as they come along, because what if we don't like the one that's, or it causes too much.
Distraction.
Concerns, so let's see, let's, let's use this first one as just to see how it goes.
So I would move to actually deny this and.
Well, if we take no action, it'll go.
If we take no action, I guess.
Or do we need to deny?
It dies itself, you have no action.
Whatever the Council wishes, if we take no action, it dies, and we won't proceed with anything further.
No. If there's no action, we can always bring it back at a later date, so, no action works for me.
Yeah, I mean, the cleaner route, Mayor, would be a motion to deny because there was a request.
I was going to say that because, because of the fact, the last time we denied it, we didn't take no action, it went back to Planning and Zoning, you know, so, and those that had a motion, whoever seconded, withdraw your, or, or, you know what, let me call for, let me call for a vote.
Yeah, there's a, there's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, there's a motion to, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
To deny?
No, in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed of the motion, same sign?
Aye.
Aye?
Did we have a motion, Ms. Anna?
There was no motion.
No.
I thought there was.
I thought there was.
No, I was, I was starting to make a motion to deny, but then we decided, or I, I decided.
Well, then you recognize for a motion, sir?
Sorry?
You want to state your motion?
Yes, I rescind the motion to deny, actually, actually, I, I motioned to take no action on this.
Okay. Second?
Second?
Do we have a second?
No, no, that we do do that.
You want to deny?
I'm sorry, Mr. Martinis, I, I think it was when you first made your motion to deny, that was the proper motion, I just don't think that it was heard on this side, but if there is a motion to deny, and I guess you could state your motion.
I'll second that motion to deny.
To deny.
Motion to deny. Any other discussion before I call for questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion to deny has passed.
Public hearing for one, for 1.1F. Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1F is a public hearing for rezoning, being a nineteen point sixty-one acre tract of land comprised of the south half of lot two sixty-two, John H. Sherry subdivision. The property is currently zoned AOI, agriculture open interim, and the request is to rezone the property to R1, single-family residential. The applicant is Ace Engineering, and if the Council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. These subjects had is located a quarter mile north of Griffin Parkway along the west side of Glasscock Road. The surrounding zones include AOI to the north, R1A, large lot, single-family to the east. We also have R1, single-family residential to the east. To the west, we have R1A, large lot, single-family residential, and to the south, this property abuts the Edinburgh Main Canal, which is zoned agriculture. The future land use map does reflect this area as a LDA or Lower Density Residential designation. The more compatible use in such a designation would be an R1A, which is a large lot, single-family. And staff has discussed this with the applicant, but the applicant is still requesting an R1 proposal. We do have one resident that showed up in opposition at the P&amp;Z meeting, and today I also got a letter from a neighbor that owns property to the west, who's, who's not in, who's not opposing the development, but he would rather see R1As instead of R1s. The Board, the P&amp;Z Board did recommend in favor of the R1s, however, staff and, and our City Manager are recommending denial of R1s. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1F is now before you.
This is a public hearing. I open it for anybody from the audience to come before us and for or against, to state your name and your address and, and your, your concern or issue. Go ahead, ma'am. Straight through, yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Joanne Banworth, and I live at twenty-five zero six North Glasscock Road, directly across from this, excuse me, this proposed subdivision. And if you have traveled down Glasscock Road today or any other day, the traffic is deplorable, it's horrible, and when school starts, it's even worse. So my concern is, if he's going to put in a subdivision, I want to know the plans, I want to know the, you know, the civil engineering, because just, what, a couple of weeks ago, we had that hard rain, that fifty-five and over subdivision flooded, excuse me, and the subdivision just across the canal flooded, and it was due to the fact that the drainage behind there was either not big enough, wasn't clean, I'm not sure, but I want to know what the city is going to offer to have a solution for these problems and what the developer, Mr. Brito, is going to do. I have traveled down Taylor Road and into his gated communities, and there is such a short entrance into the gated, that if there are two or three cars going in, they tie up traffic on Taylor Road, that I have noticed. So from my understanding, this is supposed to be a gated community? I don't know, this is just hearsay. So the traffic, the noise, the drainage, and what the city plans to do about widening Glasscock Road, which side are they going to take in? You take on my side, the east side, and I might as well just close off the front of my house because I'm already right there on the road. And also, I would like to ask if the Commissioners would consider passing on this today until you could give the community, because I went out into the community and they had no idea what was going on. They're very concerned about the flooding because even the subdivisions on the east side were flooded, down north of me. So you're going to have a real problem if you okay this and things don't work, you're going to have all these subdivisions that are, that are going to flood that have never flooded before. I've lived in the Sherry Land area my whole life, so it's, it's a real problem. Okay, so I don't know what y'all might consider. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing.
My name is Jim Barnes, I live in Mission, and I think Glasscock through there is a two-lane road. We're going to put more traffic on it? What's the plans for widening it? Are there any? I take it there's not.
Not at this moment, sir.
We have another problem in the valley. We can go six months without any rain, and we get five inches in one night. You're taking a lot of agricultural land here, and you're going to put blacktop on it and houses? What's that going to do to the drainage? Has anybody looked at that?
Yeah, there's a.
I guess not. We got to start looking at these issues, or we're going to end up like Wes Laco or McGowan underwater. I don't think we want to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other, this is a public hearing, so in favor or against? In favor or against?
Good afternoon. Carlos Garza with AEC Engineering. Just a clarification, typographical on, on the agenda, it says ACE, it's AEC Engineering, two oh four East Stubbs. I'm the engineer of record on this, on this project, and I represent Brito Construction on this, on this project. I want to make it clear to everyone that Planning and Zoning unanimously approved this, after we discussed it, after hearing staff's concerns, and after I presented to them my options of what we're doing to make this a better community in the city of Mission. I hear people, and I hear what the other residents are saying, and believe me when I say that we take into account all those factors. I must add, Bill Philitt owned a home across the street from there. Going back to the days when I was in high school, those were a lot of agricultural fields, orange fields. They're homes now. If we closed mine ourselves into the idea that the agricultural fields will stay as agricultural perpetually, we wouldn't have the city that we have today. It is your vision as Commissioners here to see that not only us as engineers, but that we're abiding by your ordinances. You have seen a lot of items right now on the agenda. I know you don't want to discuss any items out of, out of the agenda, but you mentioned the, the Raising Canes. Nori, that, that was one of my projects, and that was exactly the case, you know, a case of where the ordinance has not caught up with the times of what the economy, the trends have changed. I have a list of twelve items to discuss with you on how this project is the best solution. I have a layout that if you like, if you allow me to approach you, I would like to present you with a copy of the layout of this subdivision, of what we're proposing to do. So if I, may I?
Yes, sir, and I also want for you to give a citizen that, that wanted to see your, your plan, one copy if it's okay.
Now, I'm going to say that this has not been presented to, officially to staff, we have discussed it, but, you know, we haven't made a formal plot application, ma'am, if you would like to see it. There's a little bit of disconnect on your ordinances between R1 and R1A, and it has to do with dimensions. I'm in Aggie, you okay? I mean, so if you want to have a little bit of a, of fun there is, do the math. Length times width gives you the area, but your ordinances has different dimensions. If I take the dimensions of an R1A, the length and width, don't add up with the square footage of the, of the ordinance. So I discussed that with staff, that, that ordinance has to be cleared up. Another one is, as an engineer, I'm governed by the dimensions and geometry of my land. That land has a length and a width, so I can't just arbitrarily use a minimum dimension that the city ordinance allows because I have to play with the dimensions of the property to accommodate. So one of the things that we're doing, we're proposing an R1 zoning, okay? First of all, I'm going to say that my client has been in business over ten years. They have built and designed over five hundred homes in South Texas, in the Rio Grande Valley. Four hundred of those homes have been in the city of Mission. If you go to their website, you will see the quality of their homes. Recently, we came in before you, and we did Los Cabos Phase Three down in Sherry Land Implementation, which is a, a partial land that had not been developed for a very long time, and I don't know how many homes they have there now, maybe seven or eight last time I went out there. But that, that R1 calls for a sixty by one-ten. Mayor, I cannot do a sixty by one-ten on this property because if I divide it by that, it ends up being, again, I end up short with, with land somewhere. So what I've done is I've come up with a layouts, this minimum. The minimum width of a roadway in the city of Mission is 50 feet. We were proposing 60-foot of roadway with 42 feet of paving back-to-back, which is 10 feet bigger than most streets call for in the city. After discussion with Mr. Osobello, we come up to the conclusion that we can decrease that roadway to 50 feet and still pave our 42 feet back-to-back. And those five feet of additional feet, we would give them to the land to make bigger lots. Therefore, I'm coming up with a 60 by 115 and 70 by 115 on the corner lots. That gives me 6,900 square feet on the internal lots and 7,500 square feet or so on the larger lots. That's 15% larger than the minimum requirement that this particular zone. It's kinda like saying in the banking industry, "Mr. Plata, you got a million dollars, so you got $1,001,050 in the bank." Huge difference. 15% of additional land from the minimum is huge. We will dedicate, comment was made about the winding of Glasscock. I don't know what plans the city has of winding of the entire corridor of Glasscock, but I know that the MPO map for the city calls out for 20 feet of additional roadway to be dedicated, and we're dedicating that. By the way, a dedication of that calls for, I have to move power poles that are on Glasscock, and we're moving them. The actual winding of the pavement will be 12 feet, which is another lane worth of road, which is where the development across the street from us did, when they did that development. My client, again, has the experience of what it takes to build a successful housing community in the city. The trends of the market call for a smaller lot to add the value to the homes. People would much rather get an extra bedroom or a larger kitchen in their homes, rather than just a larger lot. It is gonna be a private, I know I'm short on time here, I mean, I could talk another hour about this, but it is gonna be a private gated subdivision. The street will not be the maintenance of the city, will be privately maintained. The lots in the subdivision will meet or exceed all the requirements of the subdivision, including the detention requirement.
I think we've heard enough, you know, I think we have it here, and when planning and zoning has reviewed, our staff has reviewed it, you know, let me open it for other individuals to see, and if we have any questions when we get to the discussion part, we'll call you back.
I would just like to close with this, Mayor, that what I would like to see from y'all is a unanimous approval of our request of the rezoning, so this project, which at the end of the day equates to $20 million investment in the city of Mission, can move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other? This is a public hearing.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Martin, members of the council. My name, it's Ernest Skloss. I live on Stewart Road, right behind this proposed subdivision. I can't stop the subdivision. That's the way things go. We're moving forward. We did a development, I'm the head of that development, right behind them. We went to planning and zoning. That area, it was all zoned, R1A, low density. We did it. We put in larger lots. Yes, it costs money, but it's a better development. Everything is better standard, I think. We gave a good review. I understand where he's coming from, but the standards were met before. I think we should stay with them and just go from there. If we can do it, anybody can do it.
So here, lots were R1As?
Yes, sir. 98 hundred square feet, and they're selling. They don't need to sell smaller lots.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else in, from the audience, public hearing? For or against? Nobody else? I will close the public hearing and open it for the discussion of the council. What's the wishes of the council?
Just as a refresher, what is the minimum square footage on an R1A?
8,000. And if you look at this rendering here, this shows you what the surrounding lots average. To the east, you have some that are 9,100 square feet. You have 21,945. Further north, 9,200. And then to the east, you have 10,000 square foot lots, 9,100 square foot lots, 9,900 square foot lots, and to the south, you have 10,285 square foot lots. So one of the guides that we use is a future land use map, and while it may be outdated, I think it's still accurate, because this area depicts R1A lots. All the surroundings show you that these are larger lots, and our jobs are, my job as staff is to protect the investments of all these people that have invested in larger homes. This is just a rezoning, though. We have seen some different conceptual, but it's gonna be a private subdivision. What we're seeing here is not the plat, but just a rezoning of the property. We have played around with different plats, and they range, on the smaller scale, you can get up to 74 lots. On the large lots, you get 57 lots. So there's a difference of about 17 more lots that can be gained by going to R1 as opposed to an R1A.
Mr. Osobello, how big are the lots right south of this subdivision, right across the street from Johnny Sherry?
Across the street from Johnny Sherry?
Which is real close by, right?
Well, the ones on the south average 10,285 square feet.
On the south side?
You have an indicator.
On 24th Street. Now, as you go in further, those are smaller, but the ones directly south are 10,285 square feet.
The pointer doesn't come up.
Do you have a pointer? Any chance? Anna?
That's you.
There it is.
That's for the public purpose, you know, so that...
So, Mr. Osobello, planning and zoning approved?
Planning and zoning did approve R1 lots. Yes, they did.
I would rather stay at R1A and get more community discussion. If Mrs. Banworth thinks that there are people out there that have concerns that have not been notified, well, just get him in here. We can easily table this a couple of weeks, maybe he does end up as R1. But it won't hurt getting more community involvement.
Hold on. Let me get the council's view first, and then we'll, okay?
So I move the table.
I will hold up on the recognition of your motion till everybody gives me the okay, that they're satisfied with the discussion. Yes, council?
I'm just, I'm just looking at the difference between the, you know, the, most of these lots are running like 6,900 square feet, maybe 7,140. There's, you know, there's, there's not that big of a difference between the 8,000 and that requirement as to what's on paper right now. Again, and as far as the drainage is concerned, I know that this is not on the table today, because, you know, zoning doesn't have anything to do with drainage. But, but the requirement would be that, that drainage behind the subdivision would, would need to be expanded to accommodate the drainage for this particular subdivision. And that would benefit the area as well, not only that subdivision. So that's my discussion on that.
The block?
I would like to, I know they're gonna do, take care of the drainage, they're gonna, I mean, by widening the road, you will get the 20 feet that is required. I mean, I would not mind going by the recommendation of the planning and zoning. I mean, I think they had done their work. I mean, that's why they're there, to check all those items, and if they had recommended, I mean, I would like to, to go by that.
Mr. Joe?
I'm with Mr. Plata. I think that members of our community spend a lot of time and effort on being part of our advisory board, and they unanimously approved it, and there's engineers on that board and other members that have been there quite a while. I'm for growth of the city of Mission, and I think that it's, people have spent so much time already on this subject, and I'm sure that we, I know my friend wanted to live in that area, and she couldn't find anywhere where she could possibly live, so this is another option for her and a lot of other families.
I'll go back to Mr. Martinez, and now I can entertain your motion.
Well, then let's just say I don't have a motion. If I sense the council, I'll let someone else make a motion.
To approve R1? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve R1 in a second. Final discussions before we call for...
Who made the motion to approve the R1? No, I'm just rescinding my...
Oh, you rescinding your motion? Okay, I'm sorry.
I stand corrected. I stand corrected, and a rule of order, and I will entertain the motion.
I'm to approve based on the recommendation of the planning and zoning board.
We have a motion to recommend, to approve based on the, on the recommendation, and this would be ordinance 4665?
That's correct, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion in a second, and again, I wanna give the final discussion for the council to last, before I call for the, for the vote. Anybody wants to make a final comment, or? If we don't have any more final comment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
One opposed, motion carries. Public hearing for a conditional use permit, sale and onsite consumption. Mr. Osobello?
Thank you, ma'am, council. Item 1.1G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages for Tinseltown Mission. This is at 2516 East Expressway 83, Lot 1, Tinseltown subdivision. The property is owned C3, Cinemark Texas Properties LLC is the applicant, and if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance, and it would also require the property to be wet, to be wet-zoned. On June 27, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Expressway 83 and Taylor Road. Tinseltown Mission has a total of 17 theaters, ranging from 125 seats up to 300 seats per theater, which equates to a total of 3,034 seats. The hours of operation are from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. They employ an average of 59 employees at this particular location. And with regards to parking, the theater has 759, or requires 759 parking spaces, and they actually have 938 parking spaces. So they have a surplus of almost 200 parking spaces. The sale of alcohol does need to be 300 feet from residential uses, and there are some apartments to the south. You have Santa Lucia Development just south of the movie theater. So if approved, we will need a waiver of the 300-foot requirement. And I did call other movie theaters in the valley to see what their, what their experiences have been with the sale of alcohol. And out of the movie theaters that I did contact, there have been no, no issues with the sale of alcohol. And as a matter of fact, this exhibit here shows just how minimal the sale of alcohol is at the movie theaters. In Brownsville, it's only 1.4% of their sales, and in West Laco, it's 1.0. In Fargo, it's 1.7%. In Harlingen, it's 0.08%. Edinburgh does have the Bristow, which did go up to 3.3%, and in Laredo, we have 1.8% of total sales. So there was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously approved approval of the sale of alcohol at the Mission Movie Theater. In talking to Tinseltown, they're gonna be doing some renovations to the theater. They're gonna do a lot of interior remodeling. They're gonna make the, the seats different. They're gonna be the vibrating seats and have the reclining seats. So one of the things that they wanna do with the upgrades is offer the sale of alcohol. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager, for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew his conditional use permit and TABC license. We're also asking that the property be wet-zoned and that we waive the 300-foot separation at this site location. This is a public hearing item. Item 1.1G is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against ordinance, possible ordinance 4666 and possible ordinance 4667? Anybody in favor or against this request? Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody against or in favor of this request? I wanna close the public hearing and open it for discussion from the city council, if you all have any individuals on the three items that are coming up, the two ordinances, plus the waiver of the, of the wet zone of 300 feet separation.
I move for approval as presented, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve as presented in this last final notes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and this is for ordinance 4666. Now I need a motion for ordinance 4667?
To approve.
Second.
We have a motion in second to approve ordinance 4667. Again, last notes from the council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearing for onsite use of permit, conditional use permit, onsite consumption. Mr. Osobello?
Thank you, ma'am, council. Item 1.1H is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Tortas del Jack. This is a restaurant at 4,001 South Sheri Road, Suite 350. This is at Lot 1, Sheri Land Plantation Grove Tech Center Number 2. This is in a planned unit development, and Tortas del Jack LLC is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 25, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The 1,500 square foot restaurant is inside of an existing plaza, and it's located near the southeast corner of San Mateo and Sheri Road. The applicant has taken over the establishment. Previously, there was a conditional use permit that was issued. However, since the conditional use permits are not transferable, the new operator is applying for his own conditional use permit at this site. The hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. A total of six employees will man the operation. And with regards to parking, parking is held in common at this particular site. There are no public schools or private schools within 300 feet or any churches. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use permit request. Staff is recommending approval of the CUP for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1H is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favors or against this request? If you wanna provide feedback, just step to the podium. State your name and address. Anybody in favor or against this request? I will close the public hearing and open it for discussion from the councils. Any discussion on the possible passing of 46, ordinance 4668?
I move to approve this, President.
I would like to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve ordinance 4668.
I'll second.
And we have a second, and this is an opening for final discussion and questions from the council.
No questions.
No questions, and this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Conditional use permit for two drives, two drive-through service. Mr. Osobello?
Thank you, ma'am, council. Item 1.1I is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for two, for two drive-through service windows at Tropical Breeze. The address is 1610 West Griffin Parkway, being Lot 19, Block 1, Oakwood Estates subdivision. Property is owned C3, and the applicant is Margie Jennifer Briseno. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On July 25, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Griffin Parkway and River Oak Avenue, along the north side of Griffin Parkway. The applicant is requesting a renewal of her conditional use permit. She has a drive-through business that operates with two drive-through windows, one on each side of the building. On the first drive-through window on the east side... On the first drive-through window on the east side, people drive up to the window in order and then they drive around the building and the drive-through on the, the drive-through window on the west side is where the customers pick up their orders. Now, one of the things that we are, I guess, amending from the first approval is the addition of a second driveway. If you look at the building and its proximity to the neighbor to the north, it's very close. So when you have a larger vehicle, it's sometimes difficult to make the turn around the building. So what the applicant is proposing is a second driveway onto River Oak Avenue so that larger vehicles can exit onto River Oak Avenue instead of wrapping around the building. When I asked the applicant how she was going to be managing the traffic, she said that it would be up to her discretion whether to give the person the order at that same window where they drive up so that that person could exit without having to do the loop around the building. So they're going to manage the flow of traffic. The hours of operation are every day from noon to 10:30 p.m. A total of four employees man the operation and this particular establishment is compliant with parking and landscaping requirements. There was no opposition for the drive-through service windows. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1I is now before you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Open for any discussions in favor or against the request. This is a public hearing. Anybody would like to provide feedback in favor or against the request? This is a public hearing. Anybody would like to provide feedback in favor or against the request? I am closing the public hearing and opening for further discussion from any of the council members. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I just have a question. On her application of her renewal, she wanted to open from 12 to 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. or 11:00 p.m.?
I believe it was 11:00 p.m. However, in talking to the applicant and with the concerns that we've had with drive-through windows in the area, she was receptive to closing at 10:30.
Because there was, there was a discussion during the planning and zoning, right?
There was a discussion, but not on the hours of operation, not on this particular item. There was a discussion with the property owners to the north with regards to a fence, but that was a civil issue.
But one of the advisory board members, they asked about the time. The reason why I want to make sure because I know we have other drive-throughs and snow cones that they are complaining that we close them at 10 o'clock. So I think it's important that we stay consistent in the hours with everybody, especially in issues like this. I think it's important that staff also do their research before they go into the meeting because according to the, when I was reading the minutes, there was one of the concerns. I think somebody asked, at what time do the other snow cones, like the one similar on Two Mile Line in Mayberry, at what time are we closing that one?
We did reference the other drive-through businesses on the second page of the packet. Snowball Express, the one on Mayberry closes at 10:00 p.m. And they also have an operation on Griffin Parkway, which also closes at 10:00 p.m.
So why would we want to give this one to 10:30?
It was operating initially, the city council gave it an approval till 11:00 p.m. She had been operating until 11:00 p.m. She was willing to come down till 10:30. And the applicant is here. If we ask her if she would be okay to close it at 10:00 to be consistent with everybody else.
But there's a driving across the street that opens till 12:00 midnight?
There is a drive-through across the street that opens till midnight, but it's not a drive-through snack shop. It's more of a grocery store where you go in and buy snacks, a six-pack of sodas, beer. It does sell a lot of different things. This is just hand-prepared snacks.
I wanted to see, I wanted to offer something to the council for consideration and that is that they close at 10 o'clock, except on Friday and Saturday. They can open till midnight.
You're talking about the drive-through across the street or this one?
The drive-through here. The drive-through across the street is already open till midnight. You know, but on Friday and Saturday, you know, open till midnight.
For this particular...
For this particular deal, but to close at 10 o'clock the other days.
See to the Friday.
So be consistent with the rest, but try it out to 12 to, on Friday and Saturday since there's no school on Friday and Saturday, so, you know. I'm just, I'm just...
Mayor, I...
What are you all speaking?
I currently feel that the snow hut places have had some concerns in neighborhoods like this and I see that this is a neighborhood. I would like for it to be consistent. We gave that other business at 10 o'clock. This one should be at 10 o'clock too. Because then we run into, some have it a certain time and the others don't. And I did question the one on Conway that we approved two weeks ago, but that's more like a drive-through. This is like a snow hut. I kind of think that, I mean, it's a different service, I understand. But I still want to take into consideration that it is within a neighborhood. And if we have another business, the same as this one at 10 o'clock and this one's 30 minutes more, I mean, it should just be 10 o'clock. What's the difference between this one and the other ones? Just streets.
And that other one that, I think the Snowball Express, it's like a half a block away. It's not like a mile away.
Yeah, it wouldn't be fair.
So we need to stay consistent. That's my opinion.
Well, we could use the midnight for Friday and Saturday for both of...
Again, I think we have concerns with, and I know we can't talk about it right now, but I think that my motion would be for 10 o'clock for this establishment.
I would agree with that.
We have a motion in a second for 10 o'clock?
Yes, sir.
And this is an opening for further discussion. The other city council members before.
I don't have any additional comments.
No comment, no additional comments, Mr. Plata. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries with the change of from 10:30 to 10:00 p.m. Let the record reflect that. I will open the public hearing for fiscal year 2018-2019 preliminary budget. Mr. Garza.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. Good afternoon. Item 1.1J is a public hearing on 2018-2019 preliminary budget. The city's preliminary budget for fiscal year 2018-2019 was presented on July 23, 2018 and has been made available to the public for review at the city secretary's office and at the city's website as required. This is, Mayor, like you said, the opportunity for citizens to speak on the preliminary budget.
It was also placed in our Facebook page, am I correct?
On our website, sir.
On our website?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, which is linked to our Facebook page.
That's correct.
In case anybody want. And this is opening...
Just for further information on the general fund, we're anticipating $46,235,000 on utility, $23,569,948. And all funds combined is a total of $107,820,783. That is the preliminary budget presented.
Anybody from the audience would like to provide public comments, public here... And this is a public hearing to direct input on our 2018-2019 preliminary budget. This is a public hearing for the preliminary budget. This is a public hearing for the preliminary budget. I will last, I will close the public hearing and no actions required, am I correct, Mr. Flores?
No action, ma'am.
No action other than, thank you, Mr. Garza. So I'll be calling the next agenda item. The next agenda item, I want you to pay special attention to it and especially the public. This is the first time that I've known since the time that I've been on the council that I don't know if anybody can, that remembers that we are going to do what is called a consent agenda item. 2.0 is a consent agenda item and there are 10 consent agenda items. Basically, the criteria that we use in the consent agenda items are those routine agenda items that may, they may not require very much discussion and/or contracts that have no significant changes, but we need to continue the contracts as far as that is concerned. However, the, each of the council persons that are here with us have, can pick any agenda item on the consent and ask for it to be addressed individually. Mr. Flores, Mr. Garza, anything else that you all want to add on the criterias?
No, ma'am. No, sir.
I move to approve the consent agendas presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda items from 2.1 to 2.10?
Yes.
Second.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And I'll be calling for 3.0 approval and authorization of 3.1 homestead exemption variance. Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 3.1 is an approval of a homestead exemption variance. This is for a property at the south 70 feet, the west 165 feet, the east 340 feet of Lot 192, John H. Cherry subdivision, and the address is 212 Union Street. Hector Pettis Jr. is the applicant. And the property is located at the northeast corner of Union Street and East 2 and 1/2 Street along the east side of Union Street. With regards to water for this service, there is an existing eight-inch line along the west side of Union Street, so it's directly in front of the property. There's also an eight-inch sewer line along the east side of Union Street. So both water and sewer services are available in the area. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this homestead exemption variance. Staff is recommending approval, subject to compliance with all homestead exemption variance requirements. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 3.1 is now before you.
Do I hear a motion or discussion on 3.1?
I move for approval as presented.
We have a motion and approval as presented in the second by Mr. Plata. And this is an opening for final discussion by any of the council persons. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Calling for 3.2 homestead exemption variance. Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 3.2 is for homestead exemption variance at the east 139 feet of the north 459 feet, of the south 660 feet, and the west 14 feet of the east 139 feet of the south 201 feet of Lot 25-9, West Edition Cherry Land subdivision. Emmanuel Marquez is the applicant. And with regards to this one, Mayor Council, this is a tract that's about, I would say about a whole mile west of Bryan Road along the north side of Griffin Parkway. And it's a panhandle-shaped lot that was left out when all the development took place around the property. It does have 14 feet of access to Griffin Parkway, so they have their primary access to a paved street. They will be using these 14 feet for a driveway leading to their property. With regards to water services, water services are along the alley side. There's an alley just east of Palm Circle there, along the rear of the property of the residence that front Palm Circle. With regards to sewer, there is also an existing four-inch line that runs also along that alley, or an eight-inch sanitary sewer line, I'm sorry. And this item was approved by the P&amp;Z unanimously. Staff is also recommending approval, subject to compliance with the homestead exemption variance requirements. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 3.2 is now before you.
Do I hear any motions?
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve 3.2 homestead exemption variance. This is an opening for further discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.3, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 3.3 is for a final plat approval of Camino de Abraham subdivision. This is a 62.28 acre tract of land situated in Nicolas Amora Survey 8-76 Portion 48. This is in a rural ETJ area. The developer is Everman Development, Inc. and the engineer is South Texas Infrastructure Group. Mayor Council, this is a development that's outside of the city limits. It's in a rural ETJ area. The subdivision was built to the county specs and standards. This is an 80 single-family residential subdivision and the water CCN belongs to Awassad. They will be on septic tanks. The nearest city sewer line is two miles away. And as far as drainage, a series of inlets with 24-inch drain lines flowing into the La Vista Drain Ditch, which is located west of the property. Planning and zoning recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 3.3 is now before you.
Before, I have one question. Who has a sewer CCN?
The sewer CCN would also be Awassad.
Awassad also?
Yeah.
And next time, indicate that in the record so people will know...
We'll do that.
Where the CCN is coming from.
We'll do that, ma'am.
So they will know that, you know, because of septic tanks.
Yes.
Okay. This is an opening for, do I hear a motion?
I'm more to approve.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? We have a second and this is an opening for further discussion.
Second.
You've been acknowledged as a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.4, sir?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 3.4 is for a final plat approval of Abrigo Estates. This is a re-subdivision of 1.264 acres out of Lot 182, John H. Cherry subdivision. The property is owned R. 1 and the developers Julio Abrigo. The engineer is Melden and Hunt. Mayor Council, this is a six-lot subdivision that's located near the Davina and Salina Street intersection along the north side of Salina. Water and sewer were already in the area, so the developers simply tapped in and extended water and sewer services for these six lots. As far as drainage, surface runoff along Salina leads to an existing storm system which drains into the Wilson Drain Ditch, which is on, or flows south of the Expressway. Planning and zoning did recommend approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 3.4 is now before you.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm more to approve.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
We have a second. Opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries and thank you for adding the drainage part on the notes. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. 3.5, approval of ordinance number?
I guess, Mayor Council, this would be ordinance number 4670. And this is amending ordinance 3793, creating a Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Advisory Board. We're amending Section 2 membership and terms and Section 3 qualifications for membership. This ordinance, Mayor and Council, the committee shall increase by one member, which the board will now be comprised of 14 voting members. Municipal court judges will be reduced from three to two and the two new board members shall be appointed for an initial one-year term. Amendments to the ordinance will become effective September 1st and staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve ordinance 4670?
More to approve.
We have a motion. Second?
Second.
Second, opening for discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.6?
Yes, Mayor Council. These are the board appointments for the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Advisory Board.
Can I have a second?
Yes.
When she names the appointees, if you could stand up and come to the front so your, so our citizens will know who you are. Okay?
Okay.
Appreciate it, Donna.
Yes, sir. This will be for Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Advisory Board, Traffic Safety Committee and Citizens Advisory Committee. On juvenile justice, we're recommending the appointment of Maricela Gonzalez.
Are you here? You come to the front, please.
And Dr. Mona Ramírez-Paras and this will be to the newly created positions and these terms will expire December 31 of 2019. For Traffic Safety Committee, recommendation is to appoint Mr. Francisco Rivera to the position vacated by Jerry Cruz, who has resigned, term to expire December 31 of 2018. And appoint Mr. Roberto Beto Gonzalez to the position vacated by René de la Cruz, who has resigned, term to expire December 31 of 2018. has resigned, term to expire December 31st of 2020.
And is Dr. Rivera here? I know I saw him earlier, but...
I believe he probably...
He probably left. About Mr. Gonzales? Mr. Beto Gonzales? They weren't notified, right?
Yes, sir. I think he also had to step out. On Citizens Advisory Committee, Mayor, this is to appoint Karina Madrigal. This is for the vacant southwest position, and this term will expire December 31st of 2019, and staff and city manager recommend approval of these appointments.
Okay. Do I...
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Do I hear a second? Second. This is only opening for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Can we take a picture with the new board members? Since it's a new... You all want to come over here to the front and then...
Thank you.
Karina? Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
In the middle? Everybody over here? And three, two, one.
One more.
I didn't have a big camera.
Over here? And three, two, one. And four.
Congratulations.
We're equal opportunity.
3.7, Mr. Gutierrez.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm seeking authorization to purchase one 2019 Peterbilt 520 door pack truck via Bayboard Contract 521-16 for the city sanitation department. This truck will be used for the sanitation department. Estimate cost $313,226 with 4 cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? First and second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to just mention about 3.7 is that that's going to give us the opportunity to move one to the recycling program that we're creating from a brand-new program.
Yes, sir. I'm all excited for that.
Thank you, sir.
Item 3.8, authorized to purchase five 2019 Peterbilt 520 front loader trucks via Bayboard Contract 521-16 for the city sanitation department. This truck will be used for commercial pickup routes for the city. Estimate cost $1,521,936 with 90 cents. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
First and second to approve, and no other discussions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
3.9, Ms. Monguia.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 3.9 is the authorization to award contract for stop-loss insurance. This was solicited for stop-loss insurance. Seven bid responses were accepted and opened. Proposals were evaluated, and partner REE was the most advantageous to the city. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
You're using option four?
Correct.
That's correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to double check.
Yes.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
First and second? Any other further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 3.10, authorization to execute first one-year renewal option for striping, paving markings, and crack seal services on as-needed basis. Renew with valid striping, first one-year renewal option as 0% increase. Orders will be placed on as-needed basis. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and a second, and this is only opening for further discussion. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.1, sir?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.11, authorization to award bid to RDH Site and Concrete for the street improvement of Anne Marie Marinell Lane from Bryan West to Golf Course. We received six bid responses and award to RDH Site and Concrete lowest responsible bidder, meeting all the specifications in the amount of $463,540. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is only opening for further discussion by any council members. No further discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Only because I live close by. How long would that take to do, Martin? You think it's going to take a...
Probably six months.
Six months? Okay, yeah.
Yes, and 80 days. Yes, sir.
That one. Because I live a few blocks away.
It's a well-needed project.
Yeah.
On those blocks.
We're reconstructing Marion Lane with a drainage.
That's what I was going to ask. This is also including drainage improvements, not just paving.
How about carbon gutter?
Yes, also carbon gutter.
Carbon gutter, sidewalk?
Carbon gutter, drainage, no sidewalk.
No sidewalks?
No.
Make sure they're...
We don't have enough right away to place sidewalk.
That's a really wide street.
It's a real wide street.
Yes, that is correct. It's a 55 back-to-back Broadway.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I made a motion.
You made a motion and a second. And this is only opening for voting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, sir. Thank you, sir. Bellamares, 3.12?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Come before you, bring item 3.12, authorization to reject and resolicit proposals for 911 emergency ambulance services. City Mission received one proposal response. Hidalgo County EMS was found non-responsive by not submitting, signed, and executed solicitation offer award form. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I just have a couple of questions.
Let's start with the questions before I entertain the motion.
Sure.
Do we have a contract in place on this one with the option to renew?
Yes, I believe we did.
And did they send you a notice telling you that it was time for renewal?
We tend to anticipate the renewal by doing contracts management and overseeing the contract, and we were notified that the contract was up for renewal.
But what is the process that we have in place? Because I called a couple of the ambulance board, and they were not aware that we were going out for renewals. Don't you always, don't they always recommend to us?
It's my understanding that...
I will defer to the lawyer. Mr. Abiel?
Yes, Mayor. We did review that. There's no requirement in the ordinance that it be presented to the ambulance board.
But that's the practice that we had have, right?
I couldn't answer that, Mr. Plata, because I don't know... I know that it went at one point, excuse me, but I don't know if that's the practice. I couldn't answer that right now. I would need to look into that.
Can I ask what the purpose of the ambulance board is?
It's to consider, to consider anything dealing with the ambulance and emergency services, and also to overlook, and I think, I don't know if Mr. James Cardosa is here, but he is...
Mr. Cardosa, you want to come up front forward? I don't think that the ambulance board has even met the past...
That is correct, Ms. Norrie. The ambulance board has not met since June of 2017. That was the last time we met, under the guidance of the previous administration and Mayor Salinas at the time. It was presented to him to go ahead and conceive he's the executor of the board to actually go ahead and have a meeting. It was delayed, delayed, delayed. At the process, it was, we were approximately 45 days away from the end of the contract. At that point, we brought it up, said, hold off. Elections came through. It was presented, and it was at the time presented it was too short to actually take it to the ambulance board to try to get that. And we did try to make a meeting with some of the board members. We couldn't. It's real difficult, because we have five of them, four plus the mayor now. So it's real difficult to try to get them to it, and we just couldn't agree on the date and time. So for the sake of time, it was brought up to our current mayor. It was decided, and it was, the option was to go ahead and actually try to get that out into an extension. We do have, that is correct, Mr. Plata, we do have an extension on there. I believe that would have been the last one on there. Sake of time, elections, and in between, we just didn't have time to do all that.
So you could not get rid of, you cannot get rid of the board members?
To get an actual date to actually try to get to present this item. Usually, we try to meet, we used to meet pretty much, Mr. Garza, like every three months, and it was brought up to every six months. And then, the previous administration, the mayor was like, hey, we just need to meet when we have items. So usually, we have yearly reports, quarterly reports, broken down by the fire department, the police department, the current EMS provider, our backup provider, and then any other issues that would come about. That's when we would have an ambulance board meeting. So June 2017 was the last one that we had on there. So this was the current expiration was July 19th, if I'm not mistaken.
But from what I recall, I think we still have a one-year extension left.
Well, the thing about it with the, with the all-extension contracts that the city has, we're reviewing them at least. We're reviewing them because of the fact that we're looking for the best reason, you know. A lot of our vendors, a lot of our vendors, what's happening is on the extension of the contracts from, they get a three-year, a three-year extension each year, and extension, extension. Then when the three-year comes back, our vendors are not even applying anymore or even submitting a bid, because, because of the fact that they already went to go do business somewhere else.
I know. Also, just so you know, the conversation, the mayor or city manager, we had also was, there was a change in the scope of service that we wanted to include also in the contract, which was the rotor, which is the helicopter, to make sure that whoever the city of mission contracted with had access to our citizens, so they can access to helicopter and fixed wing as well. That was something that was discussed.
That's correct. That was the addition and the, and the change in the scope of work. And I do want to make it clear that I didn't want the city of mission to purchase a helicopter or an airplane. It was that we want to have provision, so the one-hour critical time in emergency service is rendered to all our citizens at all times when they call 911, you know, as far as that is concerned. And our current, our current contract did not have that in place. Maybe the service providers could do it, but it wasn't guaranteed for our citizens under our contract. And that's one of the reasons why we added the scope of work for that category.
Mr. Cardosa, I have a couple of more questions. So why was the ambulance board created sometime back, and why are we not keeping with what has been, or is it better to work without it or with it? Because I kind of was under the understanding that we had to go to the ambulance board first, because those individuals would give us feedback. And could possibly they see and review the RFPs before it's coming to us, so that way we could have all that settled? Because I know that that was in question right now.
Yes, ma'am. So the creation of the ambulance board was then prior to my tenure?
I think I can answer, I can answer that question, because I did the framework for the ambulance ordinance back when I was the fire chief. And it was as a result of, we had an ambulance company that was in contract with the city of mission, and they came, and that ambulance company came into mission at noon saying that they, that they were not going to be in service anymore. And as a result of that, you know, we needed to call, we called the emergency meeting of the city council and had to go into emergency, an emergency session. We did a contract, so the citizens of mission would not be without ambulance services as far as that is concerned. So as a result of that, it was recommended by the mayor and council at that time to create, and I was, I was instructed to create, as the fire chief, to create the framework for ambulance board. And that's why the ambulance board was created, for that, to ensure that, that the contracts were and that there will be an ambulance service provided 24/7 to our citizens of mission.
And I believe that's, at that point, the backup provider also was added to that.
That's correct. That's correct.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, on this item we're discussing just going out for proposals, right?
No, this item is to not accept the current proposal, because we did not have, and to rebid. To rebid.
Right, okay, okay. So only one person submitted the proposal and was, was determined by our finance department to not...
To be non-responsive.
Okay.
So we, we're, the agenda item is to go, to reject it and go and rebid.
So who's doing the services now?
Medcare EMS, sir.
Medcare EMS? And what?
We have an automatic extension, you know, plus, you know, for that, we not, we have services right now.
And as far as the ambulance board, I mean, if they only meet once a year and they can't get together, who cares? If there's an election, then I don't think we have a need for it. Sorry.
Right. Well, my request is for that, for that ambulance board to, to meet and to review these, these proposals. That's what the purpose of the ambulance board is and was, and I think it's important to have their input.
But you're talking about, you're talking about them meeting, meeting and reviewing the proposal, but not selecting, right? Because the selection process should belong to the mayor and council?
Yeah, don't they get...
That is, that's, I mean, they're, they should meet and they should recommend, but that doesn't necessarily that mean that we're going to select that, that recommendation. I mean, it still comes to, to...
Ask for a final, yeah.
Yeah, to the council, but I think that it's very important to have the advisory committee meet and, and, you know...
And advise.
And advise. Yeah, that was the purpose of their, of their committee.
Right, and if there's a contract coming up and we need to get them together, I don't want to hear, oh, it's the election, we don't have time. Oh, it's Labor Day, we don't have time.
Yeah.
It's Christmas, we don't have time. Well, then we'll find new members.
Right.
Yeah. So the will of the department, the will of the council is to go ahead and reject and rebid and reinstate the board, you know, get the board, and I can take care of that on Thursday.
I mean, we have a current board, and we don't have to reinstate the board. The board is in place.
Well, there's some, there's some questions on the members.
They're not attending for quorum, is what you're saying, right?
That's, that's correct, ma'am.
That's a question on...
When was the last time they met? In June?
Well, see, so, so, can I handle, can I handle them on Thursday, the board, and they'll come back with a recommendation to the council?
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry. What?
Can I review the board on Thursday and come back with a council to recommendation of what we're going to do?
With the board or with this one?
With the board status.
Oh, there's...
The board members.
There's an action on the board.
The board members.
Well, we're not looking at the board right now. I'm just saying, and to me, I'm not, it doesn't matter who, what the composition of the board is, it just needs to, to meet and, and review the proposals. That's my request. I'm not, I'm not discussing the composition of the board.
Okay.
So is there a motion to reject and resolute?
I will entertain the motion.
I'm not, I'm not discussing the composition of the board.
So is there a motion to reject and resolute?
I will entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to reject and resolute.
Okay. Is there a second?
I will second that, but I need to amend that, and request that the board meet and review the proposals.
Yes.
And I would just like to add, I don't know how long it's gonna take for you all to do that process. I want to make sure that our current EMS, Medicare EMS, has it for, I don't know how long we could extend it for. And then also, I mean, we're all here to work together, and I know that they have already worked and extended it for Edago EMS, who was the bidder. So I'd like to see both of them work hand in hand, so we can provide the best service to our citizens.
Currently, ma'am, Medicare EMS has submitted a letter of extension to provide services till September 28th, as it is, and if we need to extend it further, I'm sure Mr. Ontiveros wouldn't have an issue with that.
Awesome.
Extended any further than that.
Okay.
I, I would think that his extension would be accepted all the way to the bidding process is, is over.
Yes.
You know, so whatever, whatever the, whatever your bidding process goes, because with, with the, the, the fact that you gotta certify all the, all the proposals, and then the ambulance board has to meet, and then the ambulance board will recommend to us, and then we have to bring it to the, to the council for, for final approval. But meanwhile, that, Mr. Ontiveros is, he's in the, the AP would accept the, the extension until we, we finalize the.
That is acceptable measure. Mayor, obviously, we serve as your pleasure. We have met and exceeded all the requirements you've always requested of us, that's why we requested that extension. I will point out, yes, unfortunately, we have abandoned a contract, but I will point out that this, the EMS personnel are very committed, and it's a little bit tenuous sometimes when some people, when I have a contract on a month-to-month basis, so I would ask you, if you do for an extension, do it for a longer period.
Well, we'll work on the due diligence till the end of the bidding process. That's the only thing I can operate at, at this time. You know, and, and the same thing with the Edago County EMS. I know they're here, and they're gonna be able to extend the, the, the secondary response until we, we are not. Mr. Ponson? Yeah. Good. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it, guys, okay?
I would just like to make a last comment. I just want to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. The RF, I'm learning all of this as we go, but the, the RFPs are very important, obviously, and we need to make sure that that documentation is given to every single vendor appropriately, so that there was no, there'll be no questions, concerns, or comments. And I'm with Nori, I think the ambulance board is very important.
And I just want to also make my, I don't know if I can, um, if they send you a letter, I mean, I think it's important that we respond and tell them, you know, we're not happy with the service, or you're not meeting our expectation, we're gonna go out for bids. I mean, do unto others as you want them to do unto you. I think it's so important. I mean, respond to, to letters when people tells you, send you a letter, I think it's important that we responding right.
Have you received any letters that you have not responded to?
I, I have not, mayor.
Yes. I, I haven't, I haven't heard that, that, I haven't heard.
Did you respond, did you submit a letter, Mr. Ontiveros?
Yes.
Telling us that it was time to renew? Did anybody?
Who did you send it to, sir, if you don't mind?
It doesn't matter.
Who?
Did you receive a response?
I was gonna say, uh, this isn't news to me, you know, about the, a letter being sent.
Did you receive a response, Mr. Ontiveros?
I have a call for question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We got an order, we're, have we voted?
Got a motion and a second?
Or we're still on the table with the motion?
Did we vote?
There's still a, a motion on the table. I don't think there's been a vote.
No, we haven't.
A second? All that?
We haven't voted.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm asking, so.
Call for question.
Reject and rebid and go.
Questions have been called for. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, three point thirteen, Chief Dominguez?
Good evening, mayor and city council. Item three point one-three is authorization to enter into a state plan of operation between the state of Texas and the city of Mission Police Department regarding access Department of Defense personal property. The Mission Police Department acquired an Enwrap SWAT vehicle from the Department of Defense to the state of Texas. The state plan of operations required by the state of Texas in order to track all equipment provided to the city of Mission Police Department on an annual basis. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Item three, uh, three point one-four. Authorization to receive section three G of ordinance number thirty-nine twenty-two and adopt a new ordinance regulating speed on Inspiration Road between Interstate Two and the Three Mile Line. The city of Mission conducted an independent speed survey of the newly renovated portion of Inspiration Road between Interstate Two and the Three Mile Line. According to the survey, the recommended speeds for Inspiration Road between Interstate Two and Griffin Parkway is thirty-five miles an hour, and forty-five miles an hour between Griffin Parkway and the Three Mile Line. The Traffic Safety Committee recommends approval. Staff and city manager request approval of this ordinance.
Do you have a motion?
I'm going to approve, mayor.
Second.
First and second, you're discussing, you don't have to say anything.
I'll just, you know, do, it's, it's, it's a, technically, it's a three-mile span, right? Three mile?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Pretty much, a little less, maybe?
Yes.
And you're, we're going from thirty-five to forty-five. Do we need to have the, the split?
Do we need to have the split?
Yeah, in the.
Well, there was different reasons for that, ma'am. Obviously, the, the traffic on that area, the first leg of it, between the interstate and Griffin Parkway, is based on the number of homes fronting the roadway. I believe that was a big issue with it. Obviously, we're going by the surveys that were conducted for the city of Mission, and obviously, the second as well. On the north side of 495, all roadways are forty miles an hour, except this one is forty-five, obviously because this is a four-lane roadway with a turning lane and shoulders on both sides. It's a larger roadway compared to what we have like Blind Road, Mayberry, and Glasscock. And that's a recommendation based on the s- speed surveys that were conducted.
Okay.
And you wanted to recommend forty miles across from the expressway to Three Mile Line?
That was what I was, I don't know if that's a possibility.
Well, you, 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 yes.
But that would be my recommendation, to be forty miles from.
I will entertain the motion of your requests.
Okay, well, so move then.
Do we have a motion to make it forty miles per hour? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, first and second, on this opening for further discussion. Chief, any comments before we vote?
No, sir. Of course, staff is just following the, the, what the traffic accounts were on that particular roadway, and that was recommended by the company hired by the city. And obviously, like I said, the, all the other roadways north of, north of 495 are at forty.
Forty.
Everything from 495 to the expressway is thirty-five miles an hour.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
I have a question.
On the, I don't know the agenda, I don't know, we can answer it after voting.
I'll, I'll ask you after.
If it's up to the chair, I, I give you permission, miss.
May I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
For this one?
I've been having bad luck lately, being stopped by DPS, so is there any way that our law enforcement officers can get, like, warnings or something, for people that don't know that it's changed?
I would like to see that also, for three months.
A little training period.
I drive to Western Road every single day, and I thought it was, I don't know, fifty-five, sixty?
You are going eighty?
And they stopped me yesterday, telling me that it was forty-five. And I've been driving over there for almost two years already, and I never knew that.
There's no speed limit signs?
No.
In Western, there, there, there are speed limit signs, but they're selective.
The traffic code says, if you don't see a sign, it's automatically thirty.
Yes, well.
There's a section that says thirty miles per hour on Western Road also.
When, when I was sixteen years old and took traffic, the traffic classes, thirty miles an hour unless otherwise posted.
Yes.
I thought it was. I said same from the law enforcement side. But I will talk to my officers and.
Thank you.
Now, chief, the ordinance number?
Forty-six-one.
Forty-six seventy-one for the record. The ordinance number forty-six seventy-one was approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, three point fifteen, chief?
Yes, three point one-five is authorization to accept the FY twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Other Victim Assistance Grant from the Office of the Attorney General's Crime Victim Services Division. The Other Victim Assistance Grant will allow our organization to continue to provide crime victim services through our Crime Victim Liaison Program. The total amount of the grant award is forty-two thousand dollars. There is no catch match required for this grant. The grant will be in effect from September first, twenty eighteen, through August the thirty-first of twenty nineteen. Staff and the city man, manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, three point one-five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Three point sixteen, Ms. Lerma?
Good evening, mayor and council. Item three sixteen is to reclassify utility accounts for the third quarter of twenty sixteen. Attached for your review and approval is a summary of utility accounts receivables to be reclassified in the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. These amounts are for three-month period of July twenty sixteen through September twenty sixteen. And although we are considering writing these, these monies off, we tend to go ahead and make notes on the accounts, so that when they come in for reconnections, we're able to recapture and re, and make sure the collections are taken care of.
Good.
At that time.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Staff and recommend to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three point seventeen, Mr. Salinas?
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Come before you, seeking authorization to solicit bids for storm drainage inlets, manholes, and reinforced concrete pipe for maintenance upgrades and reconstruction of drainage systems throughout the city of Mission. Staff and city manager recommend approval to solicit for bids.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Three point eighteen, Ms. Villa?
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. Item three eighteen is approval of the June two thousand eighteen financial statements. Our adjusted beginning fund balance was sixteen million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Total revenues for the period were seven million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars, and total expenditures were seven million, seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars, which leaves an adjusting ending fund balance of seventeen million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, and twenty-four dollars, of which one million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred is in general fund. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions on the financials? No questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three point nineteen, Ms. Garza?
Yes, mayor and city council. Three point nineteen is a discussion and action to implement employee engagement surveys for the city of Mission. We did have a workshop, a couple of workshops regarding this survey. The survey would allow the city to evaluate and improve the goals, communication, and leadership of the organization and its departments. Staff has received two proposals, one from Organizational Health Diagnostic and Development Corporation, which would involve two phases. The first of which would be provided at no cost to the city of Mission, and based on the, the meetings that we had, from my understanding, is that we're looking at two departments in consensus with everyone, and that would be the police department and the HR department.
But keep in mind, the HR department is, is the customer service part.
That's correct.
Internal customer service.
Right, and so the idea would also be to allow other employees from other departments to participate in a survey on how our HR department is communicating to the departments and the employees themselves.
I think it, if I remember correctly, that they're gonna randomly sample all the seven hundred employees, and then they're gonna pick from all the employees, doesn't matter what department they're from.
That, that exactly, correct, sir. That's exactly correct. The second proposal, mayor, was received from Michael Urbach, which is the director of Economic Research with UTRGV, which would include all departments, and analyzing the data, creating the report, and presenting the results. And this is at a cost of approximately five thousand dollars. At this moment, mayor, staff and myself, we're seeking direction from city council.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
We move to approve both.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and an opening for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Garza.
Thank you.
Uh, three point twenty, Mr. Pettis?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Item three point twenty is the authorization for the city manager and mayor to enter into a contract with Ecolectric USA to conduct a solar power feasibility study for the city of Mission at no cost. The city would like to enter into a contract regarding the use of solar electricity throughout the city of Mission facilities. The study will be provided at no cost to the city. Staff recommendation would be approval of this contract.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve of three point twenty. Further discussion, go ahead.
Hey Randy, how long would this, uh, study take?
They're, they're still providing that information, they're still not, they don't have the details as far as the, depending, they'll do the coordination with staff, and then do the assessments of each of the facilities.
He's gonna get every single building the city owns?
That's correct.
All right.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pettis, and it's a good start for the green in Mission. Three point twenty-one?
Three point twenty-one, mayor and city council. Authorized staff to engage in negotiations to firm deemed highest qualified for comprehensive storm drainage assessment, and authorized city manager to execute contract incident thereto. City of Mission received four proposals from the following firms: LNG Engineering, Ted Sea Infrastructure Group, Gesner Engineering, and International Consulting Engineers, and found all four of the firms acceptable. Evaluation committee comprised of city engineer, public works director, and deputy city manager evaluated all proposals on set criteria outlining the request for proposals. Staff found LNG Engineering and Ted Sea Infrastructure Group Inc. most qualified. Staff will engage firm in negotiations for firm reasonable firm fixed rates. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I would like to make my recommendation on this, and, and that is to award to Ted Sea Infrastructure Group, because LNG Engineering is already conducting a, a, an assessment on the drainage for the President Three, you know, so I would like to see a different, a different side to this, to the study.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's my take, I don't know about the council.
Well, yeah, the, the county is doing their own, their own survey, but I think, I think, you know, we can do ours, but we had discussed that not so much citywide, let the county do whatever they can, and then we would kind of focus on some of the, the hot pockets, right? You know, spend our money wisely. But definitely, yes, I would go with Ted Sea, those are the, the choices, but, so I'll make that motion.
Motion to accept Ted Sea?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is opening for discussion, if there's any questions.
Um, yes, I, I, and, and, yes, it is true that LNG is doing a county assessment at this point. The other, other information that, that I think we need to take into consideration is that in November, there will be an election to increase the, the drainage assessment by two cents and possibly, possibly even three cents. That increase would, would approximately bring in over a hundred and fifty million dollars to the county to use for drainage improvements. the county to use for, uh, drainage, uh, improvements. Um, that is gonna go a long way, um, and I, and I'm understanding that there's also already, uh, forty million dollars that they, that they have, um, already earmarked. So that's almost two hundred million dollars that, that may come into play in the next, maybe, you know, by next year, uh, in the, in the county. Our issues, uh, basically is, is, uh, is the outflow, um, and if, if the county can take care of some of those outflow issues, you know, we can drain into to those, uh, to those, uh, added improvements. Um, so I would like to see that we wait until after November to see if that, uh, if that election is passed, if that, if that money is, is, is passed and, and allocated, and then after, after that is done, then maybe we, we should, you know, move forward.
I have a different take on, on, on Ms. Garza because, uh, you know, uh, actually, uh, from the information that I have, uh, you know, the, the outlets are not the only problem that we have in Mission.
I understand.
You know, I've identified, uh, I have ten major questions for this engineering firm to answer for the city of Mission, and the first one is why was eighty percent of Mission underwater, you know, on, on that, on that day? That's the first question, and then specific other questions that I have that they want for that to answer, as far as that is concerned, you know, that I think it would delay it, and I'm not saying that we're not gonna join with the county, we're not gonna work with the county, you know, we are, we are, but I think we need to specifically, uh, focus in, in our city of Mission. You know, I have people that, uh, from all over, uh, all over the, the city that, that were underwater, and we need to know, you know, specifically what, what was the reason based on, from the engineer's standpoint, so, so, but, uh, you know, the, the contract with the, with the, with the county, we also have a, we, we also have a specific plan to work within, also to, uh, in, in, uh, enlarging the outlet, you know, doing a joint plan in, in multiple cities. Uh, several of the, uh, mayors have already met, and, and we're formulating a plan to, to work with the county immediately with, to, to be able to take care of the, of the, of that, of that outlet problem that, that we're talking about, even before the study will, will, from the precinct three, so.
So would this, would this study be on our current situation, or is it, or is it gonna, are, are they gonna wait until they do the, the countywide assessment and then?
No, I, I think, first of all, the city of Mission hasn't had a drainage assessment plan or an assessment since the nineties, you know, since the nineties. So we wanna update those and look at the, at the projects that we need to do in-house in our, in our, in our city to, to enhance and connect with it, with the, with the, uh, you know, the last, the last drain, the last money issue that we did with the county, you know, uh, I was very displeased with the quantity of, amount of money from that bond issue that came into, into Mission projects. Yes, we did have some Mission projects, but, but the size of the city of Mission and the size that was, that was, uh, percentage wise, uh, was not equitable, in my opinion, and this, I'm just saying my opinion. So, so, uh, I'm gonna call for a vote and see what the vote, uh, says on the study.
How much?
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that let's not do it. I'm just saying let's wait until November.
I, I have, I have a comment on that, and, and that, um, yeah, I'm in favor of going forward, but also, I'm, I'm in favor of coordinating with the county to see what they're gonna be working on, so we don't overlap with them and do our own thing, and, you know, that's gonna take a couple of months anyway, so we're gonna be November probably anyway, but yes, no, I, I, I would like to see what the county's doing before we get started, so we don't just, you know, walk all over each other.
Duplicate services.
Yeah. So, uh, we can do that pretty easily in the next couple of weeks, I'm sure, just, you know, getting idea what the county's doing, and, uh, yeah, but I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, of doing our own with the information of what the county has in mind.
And, and the plan is to get this engineering firm.
Yeah.
Coordinated with the county also.
Right.
That's the plan.
I'd kinda like to be involved in.
That's the plan.
What information they get too.
Because at, at one point or another, we have to coordinate, but we have to start from, from within, you know. We have areas in Mission that have been flooding for, for many, many years. You know, we have, we've been studying the, the sizes of, we've been studying the size, sizes of the drainage, we've been studying the existing, uh, uh, systems that we have, and, and we've, uh, and we've already figured out some, some factors that, that did cause some of the flooding without even going to the outlet, because the water never got to the outlet, you know, and, and case in point, you know, the Edinburgh Canal, and the Edinburgh Canal overflowing during that incident, you know, that had nothing to do with the outlet of the drainage. It has to do with, with, uh, Edinburgh, the city of Edinburgh surviving with the water that it, because we were gonna shut it down, we were gonna shut down the, the Edinburgh Canal because we were overflowing, uh, at the time of the incident, you know, but then we figured it out that that was the main source for the water for the city of Edinburgh, so, so we're, I'm working with the city of Edinburgh Mayor and the, and City Managers. Uh, we're working together with their engineers and our engineer, just to see if we can find a, 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 how low do you close the gate during emergency so we won't have that, that duplication, but it has nothing to do with the outlet, but that, that portion of the, of the results.
Yeah, I'd like to get the City Manager's input as well. Do you, do you have any comments?
Sure. Well, I, I have been meeting with Raúl C. Señ, myself and staff, um, and they, they gave us a report. The latest report was on Friday. Um, the report indicates that, uh, it's the Idalou County Drainage District that's gonna go out for a November bond election. The election that they're looking at is to increase, um, uh, to either two cents, uh, possibly even three. They're looking at three. That was the latest report. Actually, that's why Raúl C. Señ called me back, because they are looking at three cents. Each penny per the county, uh, it's equivalent to about fifty million. They do have forty million in the, um, you know, available right now for any type of improvements. The, the forty million that they have available might not reach any assistance to the Mission area and the Mission inlet and, and the Mission lateral, and I think, uh, one of the things that we've been discussing is before we even talked, um, about the bond issuance since, um, a couple of years ago, and our Public Works Director was also in that meeting, was how do we increase the capacity on our Mission inlet, and so one of the things that we looked at is working between the county, uh, precinct three, uh, Raúl C. Señ, and ourselves in sharing of, of vehicles and trucks and, and personnel to be able to move that dirt. Uh, we looked at it ourselves as far as the dirt, and Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, but you gave me an estimate of about two point, two point mil, or two million to be able to transport that dirt to locations in Mission that we will need to transport it, right? Now, the report, uh, on Friday.
Was it two million, Robert? Just, uh, to get dirt trucks?
To, to Lisa, to, to issue that to a, uh, a company to be able to do the work for us. Now, what we're working on right now is that, um, we can get precinct three, the county, uh, and ourselves to be able to work together to, to move the dirt with our own vehicles. Every, every.
Well, I have fifteen dump trucks already pledged by, by cities around us, around us, including the, the, the precinct three, precinct two, and precinct one. The, we already have fifteen, uh, fifteen trucks already, so at no expense to the city. Uh, I call for, I called it mutual aid.
Yes, sir.
You know, so.
And, and so the latest was that they're going from, you know, two to three pennies, uh, the bond election in November, uh, that would give them close to about a hundred and ninety if the, if it does get approved. If we get the three pennies, bond election approved, it would definitely cover the Mission lateral to be able to, and the Mission inlet all the way between Tay, or Benson Road all the way to Minnesota Road, and that'll cover us. If they do the two pennies, that would cover us as well. Now, if we do anything less than that, that's where the mutual aid that Mayor Canio's talking about would have to work together with different municipalities to bring those trucks and the, and the personnel together to, to move, uh, some of the dirt from that Mission inlet. Um, and so that, that is the latest report. Um, as far as cost, I know that, I, I think we checked with, uh.
Can I, can I call for the vote on three point two one, and then under City Manager, you can continue the, because I don't know if, if legal, uh, will have a heartburn.
I mean, I think that what, uh, what the City Manager's information that he's given us is, is pertinent to our decision, so I think that he should continue.
Is it?
Mayor, as the chairman, you can, uh, continue to recognize the City Manager to finish his presentation or, or call for the vote, whatever the, the mayor wishes to do at this point, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead and continue.
I was just gonna say, Mayor, that as far as checking with other municipalities that have gone through a, um, through a drainage assessment, um, I know, I think one city paid about seven hundred thousand, and the other city paid about five hundred. There is no doubt that I think the city of Mission needs a dread, drainage assessment plan, um, because the latest one that we have is in nineteen ninety-five. During those years, we've had increase in population, we've had increase also in the subdivisions that were affected along the Mission Inlet, so there's no doubt that we're outdated and that we, we would need a report. Um, but that is the, the scope of, of what staff and myself have been, uh, researching and getting information from not only the county but other cities who have been dealing with this.
Yes.
That's my report.
Thank you. Um, I will just, uh, finalize your note that three cents increase in taxes, you know, uh, is going to be very hard to pass, you know, but, uh, you know, it's just like the previous historical of raising taxes. That's why, one of the reasons why I took the, the, my platform of freezing taxes is not raising taxes, you know, and, and that's, and that's worse than. At this, I'll, I'll ask for, uh, for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Can I get a clarification on the, on the, on the motion, please?
The motion is to, to, to award.
The motion was to award the Ted C, the Mission part of the drainage assessment, coordinate with the county, see what they're gonna do, um, and, you know, definitely, I think it's kind of moot. I think that by the time we get ready to go, it's gonna be November, it's sixty days away. So it's not like, we're gonna eventually have to wait and see till November, but I think it'll happen organically instead of us having a vote on it, but yes, let's get our guys together, negotiate with them, and have them get coordinated with the county, and that's my.
First, first we have to assess the city. Once we assess the city, then we can, then we can take it over to the county and see how it connects with the county.
Well, maybe that.
Second, uh, Ms. Garza, come here. Your second?
My second.
Yeah, you, but is there any questions or, or information?
I do have a lot of questions, but.
Sure.
I just feel that I need maybe more of an assessment to sit down with you and our engineer to discuss projects like this. I do feel that drainage and all of that is of, of dire importance to our constituents of Mission. Um, I just don't think that I have enough information in front of me to make, um.
Well, this is what we're, that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to do.
But I'm here to help you, and if it's to continue with the project.
Let me clarify even more. Um, my motion.
Go ahead.
My motion is to go with Ted C in negotiations with, with a possible assessment, which may or may not happen before November. So in other words, bring it back to the board for them to, to have to go ahead.
Okay.
At least.
Mayor, and I apologize, but just, uh, for, there's two parts to this agenda item, and the second part is the authorization for the City Manager to execute contract incident there too. So just, I just wanna clarify, Mr. Martinez's motion would, would not include that part of the agenda, the authorizing the City Manager, but rather to enter into negotiations with Ted C only.
Correct.
And then if there's gonna be a contract, then it comes back to the board.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and a starting date as well. Yeah.
A starting date, okay. I'm good with, with.
So there's, there's negotiation, so there's no contract. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So once we have the negotiation, once we have their dollar amount, we present that to the council.
It comes back to council for approval.
Yeah, yes, that is exactly my motion.
Okay.
And that's.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three point two-two, budget amendment.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Item three point two-two is approval of the attached budget amendment for City Council. Um, this budget amendment is in the P D Federal Sharing Fund. It's a reclassification of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars from other purchase services to capital outlay for the additional purchase of machinery and equipment for the Police Department that will be made through the end of the fiscal year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, and this is open for further discussion. Any questions on our budget amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three point two-three, Ms. Garza.
Uh, yes, Mayor, City Council. The item on three point twenty-three is a discussion and action on proposed twenty-eighteen tax rate and tax record vote and scheduled public hearings. In accordance with the Texas Property Tax Code, City Council must propose a tax rate for the city of Mission and publish notice of property tax rates by September the first. If the proposed tax is lower than the effective, uh, tax rate, only one, uh, public hearing is required before the adoption of the tax, but if, uh, proposed tax is higher than the effective tax rate, then two public hearings are required before the adoption of this tax rate. The calculated effective tax rate is, uh, zero point forty-nine-six-eight per one hundred valuation. The calculated rollback tax rate is, uh, zero point fifty-three-ninety-seven per one hundred dollar valuation, and the current tax rate that is being proposed, Mayor, is zero point forty-eight-sixty-two per one hundred valuation, which is the, uh, tax rate that we have at this moment, and, uh, first public hearing would be scheduled at August the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen. Um, this is an agenda item, Mayor, that would need a, uh, to take a record vote, that means individual vote from each council member to include the mayor.
But first we need to get a motion, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Do I hear a motion to?
I move to approve.
We have a motion and second?
Second.
Anybody wants to ask a question before I take record vote?
No.
We can start record vote with, uh, with Mr. Martinez, and we'll come this way. Mr. Martinez, how do you vote, and show it by indication of your right hand.
I move to approve.
I move for approval.
Move for approval.
Approval.
And I move to approve. Motion passes. Four point one is none. We have no unfinished business. Now we'll have a routine. City Manager's coming as soon as he gets back to the, to the chairs. Take your time, sir. Five point one, sir.
Uh, yes, sir. I just wanna publicly thank the, you know, Parks and Recreation, the, uh, Department for all the time they spend with the kids, and it's not only about, uh, you know, bringing up the program throughout the summer, but also encouraging the kids with, uh, um, you know, with good morals and, and, uh, good direction, but also, uh, spending time with the parents, uh, making sure that they take that trip to, to state competition and just congratulating all of them who participated, but I wanna thank the staff who spent the time with all the parents and, and the students and the kids who participated in our program.
I'll call for five point two. Mayor's comment. I got two things to, to, to mention. I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that today we started at five-thirty the, uh, the, uh, City Council meetings, and that is the future of Mission, and the primary purpose of that has always been, because there's a lot of people that have provided feedback that, uh, that they work from eight to five, and they wanna attend, uh, meetings afterward, so we're allowed that. However, we are going to work on items the way we did on work, workshops at four-thirty, if, if it's needed, the way we did today. The items in the workshop will not be on the agenda, so it's not like, uh, like people have to rush and come at, at the four-thirty. They will be in the, if, if, if the council so feels that those agenda items need to be moved, uh, to, for approval, at that time it will be moved to approval to the next City Council meeting, not, not the one for the, for, for the workshop, the, time, date and time occurred inside. So, uh, at this I'll open it for City Council. Comment five point three. Mr. Martinez, I'll start to your, to my left.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I'll be, I'll be traveling from Wednesday through Saturday for the T M L, newly elected officials, whatever, so I'll, I'm gonna come back a whole lot smarter than I am now. Um, and also you, you mentioned workshops, and I've really been enjoying them. I think it's a good way for the, the public and the citizens to come out and kind of, you know, see what we're doing. Uh, and I'd like to urge, uh, this council and the mayor to call a workshop for, uh, civil service, uh, as soon as we can, and also one for, uh, review of all of our consultants that we have, uh, under contract. And only because I worked for a law firm for over ten years that dealt with a lot of consultants, and I know firsthand that consultants, um, serve a great purpose, but oftentimes that purpose becomes stale, or the services they provide may no longer be needed, and I think that that's a good way for us to kind of, uh, audit ourselves in that regard, and maybe free up some money, or clarify some of the services that these consultants do, so that would be my urging, to have, um, a workshop on, on civil service, see if we can find a little bit of money. I know they both offer proposals, and a workshop on consultants, uh, you know, at your convenience, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Ms. Garza?
Um, I would echo the same things that, uh, that, um, Gus is, is recommending, and that's basically it for now.
Okay. Mr. Plata?
No comments.
No comments, Mr. Plata.
I'll take Mr. Plata's time. Good evening. Um, I, uh, wanna thank the museum staff. Is Cindy here? Oh, okay. I wanted to especially thank her and all our city staff. Um, The Movies on the Lawn was, uh, a great hit. My favorite was at the Event Center only because the setup was just extraordinary. It was just fascinating. I invite the community and the public to attend them next, uh, next summer. The movie was really neat. Um, my favorite movie is Coco, so there was kids with face painting, and, I mean, it was just what I envisioned the back of the Event Center to be, and it was just amazing. And, um, uh, another thing what was really excited, exciting for me this week is the live P D. We're back on. Um, I finally got to see it, uh, on, um, and I like to commend, uh, the great job that our Mission Police Officers and Firefighters do for our, our community, and it's all about keeping it safe, and, um, they're making us on the map, so thank you very much for that.
Without, uh, any more comments, uh, I will entertain the motion. We have to go into executive session. Anybody wants to make a motion?
I'll move, I'll move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and second to enter into executive session pursuant to V T C A Government Code Section five-five-one point zero-zero-one. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those who oppose, same sign. Uh, motion carries. We will be back as soon as we conduct our business. I am ready to entertain my motion to reconvene.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Calling the exec, the agenda. Calling the agenda item of six point one A, we ask are legal to lead us in a-
Mayor, on six point one A, consultation with attorney, discussion regarding notice of claim from Plantation Produce Company, contract bid number one-eight A V zero-three-two four-zero-four dash ten dash twenty-five, no action on this matter, Mayor, this was just consultation with attorney.
Thank you, sir. And this, I'll open it to entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So we have a motion, second, it's not debatable, all those in favor say aye.
Ayes.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.